Let's see, one, two. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Are you ready to go?
Okay, it's 5:30 exactly right now. Yes.
Okay, we will convene this meeting. This is the open session to hear public comment before closed session. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bates.
Present.
Councilmember Choi.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Member Myrick.
Here.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Willis is absent. And Mayor Butt.
Here.
For our audience, if you would like to make public comment on any of the following items the council will discuss in closed session, please raise your hand now. To comment by video conference, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise hand button. To comment by phone, press the star nine button. After all the items have been read into record, the request to speak period will be closed. First, I'll read a comment that was received today by one o'clock, and it's from Brian Lewis. B Card maintains there should be no revision of the purchase terms for Terminal One because Laconia has caused needless additional expenditures. And the items the council would discuss include conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, John Brown versus City of Richmond at all, Deron Brown versus City of Richmond at all, Jonathan Spragan versus City of Richmond at all, Alonso Shelton versus City of Richmond at all, conference with real property negotiators, property as Terminal One, agency negotiators, Laura Snyderman, negotiating parties, Terminal One Development LLC, and under negotiation are the price in terms of payment. And I'm gonna ask Ursula if we have any speakers.
Yes, we have one speaker, Jonathan Livingston.
Yeah, good. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, good evening, Mayor Butt and Vice Mayor Bates and fellow city council members. My name is Jonathan Livingston from the Design Review Board, your city of Design Review Board. I just wanted to let you know that the DRB had worked with Laconia for years quite successfully. They have proven to be an honest and responsible applicant and to the DRB and to the public. A bit of history, back in 2012, 2013, the community of Brickyard Cove did support a moderate density proposal of 65 units of single-family residences on the Terminal One site. However, the proposal was rejected for a higher density alternative, which of course, you know, was approved. But also note that if Laconia were to do a moderate density plan, it would be the preferred alternative if it were the will of the city. Having that vacant nuisance of weeds and fences does not contribute to the health and safety and welfare enrichment. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them, but...
Okay, that was our only speaker.
Okay, in that case, we are adjourned to closed session.
Oh, wow.
Are we live yet? No? How many times y'all think Trump lied in this debate while we were in closed session?
I didn't pull it up yet.
There's gonna be dozens.
You're on YouTube Live.
Oh, we are. Okay, I'm sorry.
Show out tonight. Will the public know the president lied?
Yeah, that's true. They know he's a liar, but.
Okay, looks like we've got a quorum, Madam Clerk. Are you ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, welcome to the special meeting of the Richmond Housing Authority. Call the roll, please.
The time is 6:51. Vice Chair Bates.
President.
Commissioner Choi.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
President.
Commissioner Martina. Absent. Commissioner Myrick.
Here.
Commissioner Willis. Absent. Chair Butt.
Here.
And Tenet Commissioner Scott. Okay.
Next slide.
And the next item on the agenda, statement of conflict of interest. Are there any? Hearing none. Item C is a report from the executive director.
UC Mussering. Good evening, commissioners. I just have a one update this evening. We are happy to report that we have completed the application for Devon Plaza, Section 18, in accordance with our repositioning strategy. And we want to thank EAH for their partnership, the city, and RHA for all the work we've done to complete this application for submission to HUD for project-based voucher applications. With that said, I'm done with my report.
Next on the agenda.
Great report.
Agenda review. Okay. And let's see. Okay, so now we need approval of the Housing Authority consent calendar.
What a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Motion from Mark.
Second.
Choi. Call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Vice Chair Bates.
Yes.
Commissioner Choi.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
Absent. Commissioner Myrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Willis. Absent. And Chair Butt.
Yes.
And Tenet Commissioner Scott. Motion passes. We had Commissioner Martinez, Willis, and Tenet Commissioner Scott absent.
So, thank you. The Housing Authority meeting is now completed. And we'll transition to the regular meeting of the Richmond City Council. Call the roll, please.
Yes. Vice Mayor Bates.
President.
Councilmember Choi.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez. Absent. Councilmember Myrick.
Here.
Councilmember Willis. Absent. And Mayor Butt.
Here.
Next on the agenda. Statement of conflict of interest. Are there any? Hearing none. Item C is agenda review. Okay, under agenda review, I'll just read this announcement. Anyone may make an oral comment, even if a written comment has previously been submitted. However, each speaker may only raise their hand once to make one oral public comment per agenda item. As we move through the agenda, through the one agenda item, I will announce that item and ask individuals who would like to address the council to raise their hand. After the item is read into the record, the request to speak period on the item will be closed. So now I will ask anyone who would like to speak under open forum to please raise their hand by pressing the raise hand button. If you are joining us by video, if you are joining us by phone, press the star key and then the nine. All right, so next on the agenda is a report from the city attorney of final decisions made during closed session.
Good evening. I have no final decisions to report this evening.
Item E is a report from the city manager.
Good evening. I was asked to share some good news about a partner, a successful partnership that has recently come into play. We've been notified that Richmond Promise, the city of Richmond, and Contra Costa College have all been accepted into participating in a learning group sponsored by the National League of Cities. And it focuses on addressing basic needs of post-secondary students. So there was a good collaboration and work from our deputy city manager and the city manager's office, the mayor's office, and Contra Costa College, along, of course, with Richmond Promise, who will be leading this effort in having, being accepted into that program. So we look forward to some good outcomes and really being able to continue the good work and strengthening the program that Richmond Promise has for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the city manager to update us on the recent rent control as reauthorized, I guess, by the state for the public and for the council? Maybe the city attorney, one of the two.
Yes.
Update.
So I can do a brief update, and if there are specific questions, we do have the ability to be able to answer those. So the state of California, as part of the pandemic, has taken back control as it relates to eviction moratoriums and associated components. The city of Richmond had its own eviction moratorium, which stays in effect through the end of this month, so another day or so. And one of the primary provisions that is in the city of Richmond's moratorium and our, my emergency order, as modified by the council several different times, is that folks have 12 months to repay their rent of any rent that was accumulated during the time that the moratorium was in effect. That 12-month repayment proportion will continue beyond this September date in that any amounts that were owed up until the end of September, you'll have 12 months to repay them. At this point in time, the state of California, in slight conjunction with the Contra Costa County, they essentially are taking over all of the components that relate to this ordinance. Therefore, new amounts of money that are owed that go into effect after October the first will be modified, will be controlled by the state. They currently have an eviction moratorium that goes up until about early February, and that can continue to be modified in the future as the state deems necessary. But we have, the local cities have very little impact on this process going forward.
Okay, thank you.
And next on the agenda. Is open forum. I will just read the comments that we received by 1 o'clock today. And we received one comment from Cordell Henler. He is doing well on his project and has one of the members of the youth council helping him. He was also impressed with the youth council's presentation at the July 28 council meeting. And I'm just gonna check with Ursula. Do we have any speakers for open forum?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. So on, the next item is studies and action session item G1. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Or press the raise hand key or the star nine if you're joining us by phone. Item G1 is to accept the city's 2019 Health in All Policies report and receive a presentation on the city's 2019 Health in All Policies report on the status of health and health equity in the city of Richmond. And I do not see anyone requesting to speak on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Butt and members of the Richmond City Council. Shasha Curl, deputy city manager, economic development. This evening, we're gonna be very thoughtful about time because we know that there are lots of things on the news taking place right now. So if you'll just give us 10 minutes, we'll keep it brief. But this is a very important milestone for us as a community and as city staff and in our collaboration with UC Berkeley and with Professor Corburn, who now, he and Gabino and I and staff, actually a staff of 20 people across our Health in All Policies interdepartmental team have now been working together for 10, in excess of 10 years, if I recall correctly. And so I just really want to take this time to say thank you to the city council for your continued support of our Health in All Policies work, to Professor Corburn for working with us with, and UC Berkeley and serving as our anchor institution and thought partner in this work, and also to the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation that provided funding for this effort. So it was one of our, one of our goals as a group to have a national foundation support this effort. And so we're really pleased to bring this report before you this evening. And administratively, it is for you to receive. And so the purpose of the presentation this evening is for Professor Corburn to walk through some of the key highlights in this work. And I will turn it over to Professor Corburn now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shasha. Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna try to share my screen. Hopefully this works. And. Okay, I'm sharing my screen. Can people see that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. So as Shasha mentioned, I'm Professor Jason Corburn, UC Berkeley School of Public Health and Department of City and Regional Planning. And I'm gonna give a really quick overview of this report that we've been working on for quite some time. And again, thanks to Shasha and the city manager's office and many others that Shasha did and didn't mention, including many community-based partners that really informed this report and this work and my research assistance, and of course, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, which gave us funding for this. So this report really is about the Health in All Policies ordinance, a sort of progress report update on where are we, how are we doing? And just a reminder that the Health in All Policies ordinance is really an umbrella strategy. It's not one policy, and it really recognizes that health, as we're seeing now with this pandemic, it really happens outside of the healthcare system in many ways, in housing, economic development, transportation, education, the kinds of things that the city has some control over. It's also about collaboration. It recognizes that it can't happen just in one institution or one government agency alone, that it requires meaningful partnerships. And explicitly, we're really focused on health equity in Richmond, which means that all groups, particularly those that are already vulnerable or marginalized, people of color, low-income communities, have the resources and opportunities to be healthy. So I think about Health in All Policies as sort of an umbrella overarching guiding framework, not one action. And as Shasha mentioned, it emerges not independently, but after a long history of engaging in land use planning and policymaking and incorporating health in very innovative ways here in the city of Richmond, dating back to the general plan update and California's first health and, community health and wellness element, and also Richmond being one of the first cities in the United States to pass a Health in All Policies ordinance. So the goals of this report really were to fulfill some of those obligations of the ordinance and the strategy document, to look at a mixed set of data, to interview people and to talk to people about what programs are working and how they influencing health equity in Richmond, and to think forward. How can we learn from this to move forward? And just these six colorful words on the bottom here are the six action areas that I'll be talking about that are part of the Health in All Policies strategy. So governance, economic development and education, full service and safe communities, residential and built environment, environmental health and justice and quality, accessible health, healthcare and homes. And I'll give you some examples of that. But first, some good news. Life expectancy has increased here in the city of Richmond. This is some data, not as up-to-date as we'd like it. But things are getting, compared to less than 20 years ago, people are living longer in Richmond. And that's a positive thing. But disparity still exists, especially by race and ethnicity. On the left here, we're showing data by zip code, and everybody's living longer, but it's not equitable. And on the right, we're showing the percent of Richmond residents rating their health as good or excellent, which is a question that we added to the Richmond Community Survey a while back. And we can see that there's variation by race and ethnicity in those responses. So these are some, the kinds of things we want to pay attention to as we move towards health equity in Richmond. One thing that has not improved as much as we'd like is emergent asthma urgency department visits. These are visits per 100,000 people, and you can see sent by census tract. These are data that dark purple is the highest rates of emergency department visits. And on the bottom left, you can see how Richmond overall compares to Contra Costa County and California. And you can see we're not doing as well as we'd like folks to be. And we know now that things like asthma and many chronic illnesses are not caused by one exposure alone. For example, this study looks at the drivers of asthma in, that happened in the womb when a mother is exposed to stress, like poverty and violence during pregnancy, that can contribute to childhood asthma. So we're really in this Health in All Policies ordinance and strategy and in the report, really looking at those chronic stressors. And what we know now about the biology of stress and what we're seeing also with COVID is that chronic stress, including racism, really can damage the immune system, damages our body, and that.
You're cutting out for me, Professor. Can other people hear him?
No.
No, he's cutting out for me too.
Yes, messing up.
Jason, do you wanna try to restart or Pam? I thought that was Pam's gentle way of telling us our time has expired.
No.
I'm just kidding. Um, so can we give Jason one moment to try to log back on?
Sure.
And then I think KCRT staff will have to let him back in. Okay, so we're gonna move forward on two parallel paths. We're going to see if Jason can log back in and join us. And if not, then Gabino is gonna put the PowerPoint deck up and cover the next few slides. So we are on number, slide number eight, Gabino.
Could you see the PowerPoint, Shasha?
Yes, go ahead and put up slide number eight, please.
Okay.
Luckily, we presented together numerous times, so I think we're used to pinch hitting for each other. Jason, if you do hop back in, um, please let us know. And hopefully KCRT can let you back in. Gabino, you wanna go ahead and take it from slide number eight?
Yes, so the, our health and all policy strategy of, of course, is uh divided into the seven different intervention areas. Um, and what the report does is kind of give feedback back to the community and to the council on some of the progress uh that we have done in that area. So the first area is governance. And I think what's innovative about this report is that uh the first area of governance, it shows what we're doing as a city to change or to be more equitable. Um, not just necessarily what the community and other systems do, but we, what we as a city are doing. So the first section is governance. Um, some of the areas of highlight for uh our work has been uh interdepartmental work across departments. So the first, we have the HIP interbar, interdepartmental team uh which uh help uh create this report. And also works on different grant projects, different community priorities. Um, it's also a sounding board for uh city staff to talk to each other related to uh different um. Issues that arise that might be affecting one department, but other department can support each other. Uh, we also have uh the GARE team, they're progressing along. You, you've heard about uh their trainings and, um, and having a more focus on race. And equity at our, um, in our city. And also now we have the Richmond Open Data Dashboard, the Transparent Richmond site, which many of this data that we have. Uh, part of it uh for more community members to get involved is to show our progress and show uh what we're doing. So um that website is being uh worked on and being built off. So the report uh gives a little bit more detail in that area. So as you can see, in each section, there'll be a, a little uh summary and also some quotes of some of the people that were interviewed, both in the qualitative uh section of the report. Uh, for economic development and education, uh some of the feedback that we got that uh has been important has been related to the workforce. And uh training related to youth works, rich and works and Richmond build. Also, you know, positives related to issues related to the minimum wage and our minimum wage ordinance. And also the implementation of our Richmond Promise uh program that is not just mainly a scholarship, but it's more than that. The amount, you know, does not cover all of tuition, but getting the support uh from, um, from the executive director, from their staff. Uh, navigating what they call the hidden curriculum in universities is, um, is, has been very positive. And also currently in COVID-19, uh, you know, they're able to maneuver now because we have a whole list of students, a whole list of support. So right away, they were able to organize issues like, you know, getting laptops or getting internet access uh that I don't think the city had as before for higher education. Professor Corburn, you're back on?
I am. Can you hear me? Sorry about that.
Yes, we could hear you and I could, if you say next slide.
Yes.
Next slide.
Okay, uh, sorry about that. That happens often during my lectures and I think my students are happy when that happens. But uh I know I wanna be quick tonight. Uh, just on the economic inequalities, you know, things are getting better, but there's still disparities in Richmond as we know by neighborhood. And this is just showing the census tract in, in Iron Triangle about um where, how that compares to the rest of the city. Next slide. So the uh third area is the full service and safe communities. And as Gabino said, that many initiatives uh in the city uh like ONS and some of the partnerships with the Contra Costa County and other things to uh improve that access, safety. Uh, and we know that safe communities um can be healthy communities. And here we're seeing some, um, how people report from the Richmond Community Survey about whether they feel safe in their neighborhood. Next slide. And we just wanted to specifically continue to do an incredible job of keeping firearm homicides uh down and shootings. There's some data we looked at that ONS prevented about 16 firearm incidents uh last year. And if we price those as has, is, is done often at the state level. Uh, and in many cities, about a 435,000 per shooting with an injury or a million dollars per gun homicide. Um, we did a little cost benefit ratio analysis here and the city spends about 1.2 million, but saved between 5.8 and 14.8 million through the work of ONS. So these are the kinds of things that we wanna point out as uh, you know, not directly an HIAP initiative, but really under the umbrella of health and safety. Next slide. Of course, where we live and the quality of that environment has a great deal of influence over um our health and our opportunities to make healthy decisions. And some important initiative is about the Richmond Housing Renovation Program. And some Greenway and Built Environment improvements, the Ferry to Bridge Greenway and the work of Pogo Park, for example. Uh, who's also a co uh grantee on this project. And we're looking real specifically at some of the impacts of their work in the Iron Triangle neighborhood have been uh some examples of real important built environment success. But we see also that people um are sort of rating about the same over the last five years. Uh, the quality of their built environment and we can see the breakdown on the right by race and ethnicity. Next slide. Of course, environmental health and the commitment to environmental justice is a critical part of health and health equity. And protecting all communities from the harms of pollution, but also the opportunities to have access to green space and the short line. And all the beauty and natural resources in the city uh is also part of environmental justice. Um, we looked at the Climate Action Plan, the innovation around community monitoring uh and the solar program. Um, not just on single-family homes, but on multi-family affordable housing, the partnership with grid alternatives as one of a series of really innovative strategies happening in the city. Um, but again, on the right-hand side, just showing some perceptions of the natural environment on the top by, again, by race, ethnicity, over time in the city. Uh, we can see things are about the same um for all groups, although improving for Latinos and uh about the same for African-Americans. And on the bottom, we're showing a state data uh to most diesel particulate matter. And we're seeing a disproportionate burden still in the Iron Triangle neighborhood compared to the rest of the city and Contra Costa County. So more work to be done on environmental justice. Next slide. And this is the last intervention area on quality and accessible health, homes or healthcare. We know that's a critical issue now, um, of course, and always continues to be. And we want people to have quality, affordable and culturally competent healthcare um for disease management and timely treatment. Um, and we know that there's some positive things happening again through partnerships with health providers and lifelong medical center, for example. And really think that the Richmond Rapid Response Fund uh, which was. Driven in part by community organizations in partnership, how existing partnerships committed to health equity can uh be mobilized uh to respond when there is a crisis. But what we've also looked at is commute times, which is the map you're seeing on the right-hand side, or the travel times rather, from different Richmond neighborhoods to um. Altibates and Summit in uh, in Oakland, for those who can't get treated at Kaiser. And these are data from the State Office of Statewide Health Planning on estimated annual heart disease-related emergency department visits. So this is a, someone who's having a heart attack, the estimated numbers based on uh people who, from those uh, those zip codes. Who have visited a hospital for a heart attack. And the travel times we estimated from uh different locations in Richmond and San Pablo. And you can see the darker shading is a 50, almost a one-hour commute to get to the hospital. And so this is a, is something that is really a crisis that we need to pay attention to, getting people emergency care and timely care. And just to wrap up, last slide, please. So what we're uh suggesting is. There's some progress, some real progress and that health and all policies uh really should be seen not as a one-off. A, a policy by the city, but really as focusing on health and health equity as something that can be constantly addressed and improved. Through different strategies that the city has some control over, including land use and partnerships and education and others. Um, so that we hope that reinvesting in health and all policies means a commitment to continually improving upon. And ensuring that all people in all neighborhoods across Richmond can. And be healthy. And we think that, um, and that maybe more attention, more targeted focused attention, what I call urban acupuncture could be used to really focus. On uh highly vulnerable people and neighborhoods. And I think an important thing that we're committed to doing in partnership also uh from UC Berkeley with the city is to get some of these data that I presented tonight and that are in the report. Publicly available on the Transparent Richmond website, uh including the qualitative and quantitative data. So that people across Richmond and, and across the county really um know about this work and, and what's happening. And what else in the public health world, uh both in the US and globally, people are looking uh at this case as an important example of what cities can do to be leaders. To promote health and well-being for their population. Thanks and sorry about the technical difficulties.
Thank you, Professor Corburn. Um, one thing that may be helpful just in closing for the council is to understand. How the community survey data sets have evolved over time um as it relates to race and ethnicity. Um, if you have a moment to cover that, and if not, then we can certainly follow up with the council uh via email with that information.
Well, the, in general, the Richmond Community Survey is a really rich dataset, but it's un, very uneven. Um, and in particularly capturing, uh, they would aggregate data in different ways by rate. It's an ethnicity over different time periods. They would also sometimes provide geographic information of the survey company and sometimes not. So one of our recommendations is to be more consistent with how data on race, ethnicity, economic status and geography are captured. So that we can do things um uh and disaggregate the information, not just kind of smush it all together as, you know, the city of Richmond, which is important. But what's happening for different populations?
Uh, do council members have questions?
Um, yeah, I have, um, just, this is not a criticism, just checking in. Who did we get lumped, who did Asians get lumped in with?
I, in the uh survey data, we had very low numbers. Some, some, some cases are lumped into people, we didn't have um all that data disaggregated for all the years. So that's why we didn't present also Asians.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other questions from anybody? Do, do we have any public speakers, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any public speakers, but we did receive one comment um by one o'clock. And that was from Cordell Hendler. Uh, the city manager's office has done a sensational job. And he urges the city council to accept the city's 2019 health and all policies report as presented. And I'd just like to say that all the comments in their entirety are currently online. And if you go to the main website, go to city connections, then go to archives and then city council minutes.
Well, I have a, a question, Mr. Mayor. Actually, as a conclusion of this report, where do we go from here? What are the recommendations as it relates to improving the quality of life in the city?
Don't everybody speak at once?
Well, uh, that's a very good question, Vice Mayor Bates. Um, the, the work that we have with Professor Corburn, this is the conclusion of this particular um deliverable with the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. But the work continues on a, on a monthly basis, the city's interdepartmental team continues to meet. Um, and what we tried to show in this report is that the city is doing a great job in terms of other activities that are happening concurrently. So for example, the work around GARE um and some of the other training activities. The work of um improving housing quality with the Richmond Housing Authority uh and things like that. Uh, one of the things that I will say is that um Gabino has done a, a really great job of leading this interdepartmental team. And one of the primary outcomes of that work has been grant writing. Um, that's usually something we lift up. And so there's been a lot of collaboration to write grants to uh improve the built environment. But if the city council, we have a whole bunch of recommendations and uh implementation strategies and the health and all policy strategy itself. But if there's anything that the council would like to encourage staff to work on, um, we certainly uh welcome your recommendations. And Gabino, I don't know if you have anything you wanna, or Jason, that you'd like to add?
Well, I just wanna add, uh, would the staff supply some deficiencies and what we intend to do about it? That's the key uh purpose, I think, of the report.
Right, I, I do, I, I think the point of the work um is to, is for us to quantify. Uh, and show for the public record that there still are health disparities by race in Richmond. And that um we appreciate the city council's support in working to a great, address these health disparities. Um, by race, by ethnicity, by geographic area. Um, and that it's, it provides a conduit for us as staff to then make decisions based on equity. Um, and to bring those recommendations before you so that we, every day in our work, we're thinking about how do we as city staff act as health clinicians? And so that we're thinking about the health of the residents when we make a decision. Um, and so that's, that's really the opportunity here is that for all of staff to understand that the decisions we make every day. Impact the resident's health and how we still have a huge disparity in uh the life expectancy. We're doing better, but um we still have a long way to go in terms of im, improving uh the health equity of Richmond residents. Uh, and specifically for um African-American residents.
And also wanted to add that this report also allows us to approach the other systems that are, you know, in charge of these areas directly. So when uh Professor Corburn talks about the hospitals or access to healthcare. We could see the responses from our Richmond residents directly and approach, say, Contra Costa Health Services on getting more people signed up for healthcare that we need to do. And how staff, how the city could be helpful in that way. Uh, we did that when Obamacare passed. We saw in the previous report how many people were uninsured. Uh, we had uh, I think over 10,000 people that were uninsured. And then even though the city does not provide direct healthcare, we were able to provide spaces in our community centers, an outreach plan to be able to get more people signed up. an outreach plan to be able to get more people signed up to get access. So I think that this report, it also helps us as we approach our system partners to deal with it, like the county and also the school district.
And then also Vice Mayor Bates, like when you made comments when we are setting up the COVID-19 testing station about how we needed to have an opportunity for people to get tested quickly and rapidly without always needing to schedule those appointments. I think hearing that from you and from other council members, that kind of information, we can take that as staff. And so when we're negotiating leases and things like that, we know that you're prioritizing. And it's important, and we're documenting the public health of our community. And so we really appreciate the fact that we have this partnership with UC Berkeley and that it's having tangible outcomes for residents in in terms of improving the built environment and improving health.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes, considering that structural racism is one of the issues considered in health and all policies, how do you see reimagining Richmond being playing into this?
Are you talking about reimagining law enforcement, right?
Yeah, that's Richmond, right?
Well, I might, I think that's a really good question. We have members of the interdepartmental team that are working on health and all policies that will be working with the city manager and Sal Vaca on that. And so I feel like it's important that staff have these opportunities to work together interdepartmentally so that way, when new policy direction comes up from city council, they can take that framework and apply it to the new initiatives. So I don't know that there's a specific way in which staff can imagine what it will look like definitively. But the the framework around dealing with institutional and structural racism, dealing with health disparities, that staff have been trained in this. And so now, as they approach new policy initiatives, they can bring that framework with them. Specifically, Guadalupe Morales, Michelle Mylum, Telfic and numerous others have been involved in the Health and All Policies Interdepartmental Team and numerous. And though there's going to be some carryover between the two groups of staff supporting those efforts. So I hope that's a satisfactory answer as a starting point with the understanding that there does need to be some direct follow-up.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Troy?
Yeah, not so much a question. I just wanted to commend both staff and Professor Corbourn for for this work. I actually think the opportunities will, this training will will help us actually identify a lot of synergies and opportunities in the future. So I commend everybody involved for being so forward-thinking. I also know that our collaboration with the university and especially with Professor Corbourn has been very fruitful over the past decade and really look forward to to seeing what occurs in the next 10 years.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? I would entertain, go ahead.
Yeah, I do have comments. I really commend Sasha and and Gabino for the work that they've done. In fact, the the city manager staff is both a bane and a blessing. When when I'm in agreement, they're a blessing. When I'm in disagreement, they're a bane because they are so good at what they do. They're they're very proficient and they get things done. But I think our health and all policies doctrine is problematic when leadership fails to agree on what should be considered as health deficiencies in establishing city direction. I refer specifically to the shop-off housing projects slated to be built on the Zenica site. It's a toxic site capped with concrete. In doing so, we're creating a community that will eventually suffer unnecessary exposure to toxins that are in the ground and toxins that will seep into the bay. And I sometimes think that the city council does not hold the doctrine, the the health and all policies seriously enough. And, you know, that's, that's just my, my opinion. I think we also, I noticed that that you also talked about asthma. You said that asthma is not improving, and a lot of it has to do with our industry, such as the Lebanon Terminal as a Chevron refinery, which needs to be decommissioned. In fact, I have a book here, Decommissioning California Refineries. I think it's a book that we need to read so that we can figure out how to have a a just transition so that all the workers in the refineries aren't left without jobs so that we can have a transition so that everyone can not suffer from doing the right thing. We also, you know, I also commend you on on the solar paneling, you know, and and putting the solar panels at the at the terminal where the cars are stored. But we should also think of other places that we can put solar panels. For instance, the parking lot that we have right outside City Hall. And you mentioned the lack of medical. There is no reason why we should not have a hospital here in Richmond. A hospital in Richmond is necessary. And we should do everything possible to make sure that we get one. It's it's not acceptable to not have one, you know, a a emergency center is not enough. We have a refinery and we don't have a capacity to take care of any mishap there. So so there are a lot of things that we've done, and I appreciate all the efforts that we've put into it. But there's a lot more that needs to be done, and we need to have everyone working to make sure that it happens. You know, there's, you know, anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, other comments? I would entertain a motion to accept the city's 2019 Health and All Policies Report.
So moved?
Okay.
Second.
Second by?
Second by Myrick, yeah.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bates?
Yes.
House Member Troy?
Yes.
House Member Johnson? House Member Johnson?
He frozen?
Frozen. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Myrick?
Yes.
House Member Willis is absent. Councilmember Johnson? Count, Mayor, but?
Yes. And I might might mention before we leave the subject that the the West County mayors had a spirited and informative discussion about about medical care in West County at our meeting on Thursday. And we're gonna take it up again our next meeting in October. We're gonna talk about, we're gonna have a presentation from lifelong medical care. And then maybe in November, a presentation from Kaiser. And these are very interesting. And any council member, anybody actually in the public is welcome to join these meetings. So if you're interested in medical care in West County, you might put that on your on your calendar. So the next item is adjournment unless somebody has something before we go.
Councilmember Johnson is back on. How are you voting on this item, Councilmember?
Yes, my apologies for that.
Okay, so the motion passes with Councilmember Willis absent.
Does anybody have any announcements or other things before we adjourn? Going once, going twice? Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.
Take care.